I hope that we end this whole series on an uptick, on a what can we do? And we're gonna see some of that with Ms. Jen Russell tonight. But many schools during the Foundation of America, if you didn't know, were started, basically, they would read Bible stories, they would have Bible teaching. There was something called the Bay Psalm Hymn Book, where we'd sing hymns in public schools. And we would have something called, because I've ever heard of this, the New England Primer, and how they taught the alphabet. I'll just give you a couple of examples. The letter A, in Adam's Fall, we send all, right? Here's a letter B, heaven to find the Bible mind. This is how we taught kids how to phonicate these words, right? Letter C, Christ crucified for sinners died. This was in public schools, that we would teach these little principles and sayings. And you see, just those little seeds were getting implanted in young kids' minds, right? And then we had universities like 1634 Harvard to train ministers of the gospel, right? And their models were about Jesus Christ, and the glory of God, and the knowledge of Him, and advancing the faith. This is what our universities did, and we're seeing a little bit of that. No, actually, a lot of it. A lot of our universities that don't do that anymore, amen? But guess what? You know how you reform those things? By us getting involved and saying, no, Lord, we're not gonna tolerate that anymore. We're gonna go in there, and we're gonna bless those who do well, and we're gonna try to do our best to say, no, Lord, we don't want the evil in there anymore either. How do we change that from the inside out, amen? So that's what we're doing tonight. And so, I have a few questions here, and again, we're gonna open up the questions tonight to the crowd as well. And again, thank you so much, Jen, for coming tonight, Pastor Todd for joining us. But my first question is for you, Jen, because you came on a podcast one time with me and Mike, and I remember, I hope I'm not exposing you, but it was really funny. When, before you came on air, it was about a half hour, she's like, I'm not good at this, I don't know if I can do this. And I'm sitting here thinking to myself, and she wants to run for school board? You know? But just the passion in the heart, once she got behind a mic, y'all, it was over. She just clicked, you know what I mean? So like, the Holy Spirit took over. But you said many times that you were the least type of person to run for a position like this. And so what was it that made you run for this position? What was it that like, man, I gotta do this, you know?
Short answer is because I care. But I never would have imagined that this was the route that God would have taken me, because I do feel that I am the last person that would have ever done this. I've always tried to be pliable and follow God's direction. I feel like I can't be out of His will, that scares me worse. And so, as much as I was terrified to do it, I was more terrified to not be in His will. Now, because I don't like public speaking, I wrote some notes for myself tonight. So bear with me, folks. I just, this is not something that I felt that I had the strength to do on my own. He literally, He held my hand through the entire process, I kid you not. When He calls you to do something, He really does equip you, it's not just a saying. He, there were days that were so tough, that He met me, like, I felt His presence and He was there. And I'm like, alright, I can do this. Not only that, He gave me my husband, who stood strong, and He encouraged me when I doubted myself. He knows how bad it was. But I look back over my life, and I see how God prepared me for what I did, I'm doing today. There are times in our lives where God calls us to do difficult things, and we might be hesitant. But we always have to remember that it's not always about us. It's about what He's accomplishing through us. And He takes the least likely, the unassuming, but willing vessel. And I'm so humble that He trusted me enough with this position, because this is a big deal, this is a big responsibility, to be making decisions on behalf of an entire school district. You're talking over eighteen thousand children that my decisions, as well as the other board members, affect. And I wanna make sure that it's right. And I can tell you that I go to prayer before I make these decisions, to make sure I'm doing the right things. Will I always get it right? No, but I'm human, and that's just the way it is, so bear with me. But if I can encourage and leave something for you to ponder on tonight, it would be to trust the process, because He's refining you and stretching you. And sometimes He stretches so far, you think you're going to break. But He doesn't let you break. He's always there, but it's always for His purpose and glory.
Amen. That's a sermon. His letter preached that. You wanna preach next week?
No.
I'm kidding.
You got me here.
I just saw your face go white. It's okay, we're kidding. So I have another question, because you're saying, obviously, yes, He does stretch you. And anybody that knows the refiner's process, it's tough. But boy, will you ever regret the refiner's process when it's over? No, for what He's done. So what are the things going on in Martin County schools that you wish people knew more about? Good or bad? Like, you don't see a lot of that televised, and so, we wanna know, like, what's good? We kinda know the bad, we can see that, but what's going on that's good, and some things we may not know that are bad, you know?
Well, I'll start with the bad first, just because I'm gonna end on a good note. The bad, I mean, you've got the typical things going on. You've got vaping, you've got, you know, these... That's something that has become popular, that I would love to stop. There's also things like social media. Social media has really been a driving force with mental health concerns for our youth. It defines the way they feel about themselves, it defines who they are. They're letting the world tell them who they are, when the Lord should be telling them who they are. And they should be confident in who they are. And I just feel like, you just have to be careful at the age you let your child get social media, because if you don't feel that they have a solid foundation, and they're ready for that, because it's ugly.
It is ugly. It takes them.
That's part of what we're working with, because there is a mental health crisis right now. And it's awful. And so that is something that, as a church, I feel we need to really pray for our children, and what they're battling, and what they're going through, because it's a spiritual battle.
Amen.
But despite those issues, there are so many great things going on in the district.
Come on, give it to us.
Okay. We do have a new superintendent, and he is doing a great job. His goal is to make our school district the number one district in Florida. And I believe we're gonna get there. He's put a ninety-day plan together to help our district to achieve this. And this can be accessed on our district website at martinschools.org. So if any of you wanna read it and see what he's, you know, got us started with, feel free at any time. But I did wear my shirt tonight, where we have our slogan on here for the year, which is Better Together. And we are better together. That's here at church, we're all better together. At, in our community, we're all better together. You know, we truly believe that we can accomplish so much more when we are all rowing in the same direction, with one clear vision. And Mr. Main has given a clear vision with expectations. He's very clear as to what he's looking for. And every staff member I've spoken with has expressed how excited they are for this year, and the direction that the district's going. He's a strong leader, and you know he cares, like, you can see it. He's passionate about it, but the best part is he's so genuine.
Amen.
And I appreciate that.
Amen, amen. So my next question's for Pastor Todd. I, uh, schools, really? Like, what, why schools? What, shouldn't you be ministering the gospel only? Shouldn't we focus on that alone?
We are.
But why schools? Why, why the territory, why schools? We'll go with that one first.
I mean, it'd probably be an easier answer to say, why not?
Amen.
But the reality is, we have a commission that we're all aware of in Matthew 28, that we're to go out to all the nations. And I find it kind of interesting that we would isolate sections of nations, and say, but we're not gonna go there. But we're not gonna go into the school, but we're not gonna go into the government. And I'm not really sure how good I can feel about going out to the nation, when I can't even go out to my own county. And so, I think... I think the greater question is, why are we not influencing everything for the kingdom of God? And why are we not sharing the gospel everywhere? It'd be kinda like, no different than saying, we're gonna share the gospel in Martin County, except in the downtown section. You don't isolate one area and say, that's off limits. Everything in our territory is within our limits to share the gospel, which is the things that Jesus said, teach them the things that I've commanded you.
Amen.
And so, we have a call to do that, and I don't see that the schools are some kind of roadblock issue, especially not when we're dealing with our kids. I mean, these are our kids, they're our kids, they're our grandkids, they're our friends' kids. And when we're sending them off to a place that we have watched generationally pull God out of, and then say, let's send you into the darkness unequipped, and we won't be there for you. This doesn't make any sense to me, that the church is not saying, that is a bastion that we need to be in, and helping those kids manage through the social media, manage through the decisions for vaping. Give them reason to stand on their own merits and credit in front of their God, instead of their peer pressure.
Do you think too, if you could explain the difference? Because the gospel is truly in word, right? But the Bible says it's also in power, which means our works. Is the gospel only confined to words? Because I think what happens is, we say, preach the gospel, but are we willing to lend our hand, like your sermon was last week? Are we willing to do the works that He created to us in the first place? Does that make sense?
I think, I think what you're doing, though, is you're, I mean, in what you're expressing, you're limiting the gospel to the message of salvation.
Right.
In other words, let's go out into the community, let's get one saved, let's bring them into the church, and protect them from the community, and just have this little private club of Christianity here. That's not the gospel. The gospel is that you can be healed, that you can be saved, that you can be set free from the demonic, that you can live in joy and peace and happiness. And that being made available to everyone is part of our calling. So I don't think we can not share the gospel in every aspect of the gospel, in every territory that we're assigned.
Amen. And Jen, I'm gonna ask you a follow-up to that in a second, because I think what you're gonna bring tonight, and how we can get involved, is the gospel. That is what we're supposed to do, right?
Amen.
Another question I have for you, Pastor Todd, is... So we've seen the fruit of taking territory, right? We've seen what can happen when we get involved as a church. And I'm just telling you guys right now, we're rolling out in two weeks with StrikeForce. We are, we are, this is, this is kingdom movement, man. This is awesome stuff. So I just wanna know, boss, sorry, Pastor Todd. What is the territory vision for Revive Church politically, socially, and in education? What is, what is it that's on your heart for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years?
You know, I talked about this, I guess maybe a little on Sunday, or definitely over the last few months. Act seventeen says that we were put here for a certain time. It was predetermined the time in history that we would be put here in this territory, the boundary of our habitation. So when I look at the responsibility of what that means before God, that for whatever reason that I'm to explore, He chose, I need Todd Mosingo, Jan Mosingo, Massey Jen, I need these people to be in the 2023 timeframe, and I need them in the territory of Martin County, then there had to be intentionality. There had to be purpose, there had to be reason. And so, as I explore the passions that He puts on us, I begin to see that it is to be a church that actually demonstrates how to change a territory.
Come on.
And what I mean by that is, I don't believe in any sense of the word that our goal is to go out and save one and bring them in. I think our goal is to take the territory to the kingdom. When, I mentioned this when we were in Israel. By the way, if you're not going to Israel, please sign up for Israel next year. We, probably, a lot of us were taught that when the Israelite nation crossed the Jordan River into the Promised Land, that that was a picture of heaven, that we've crossed over into our heaven, and that we're now in the Promised Land. That's wrong theology. I'll tell you why that's wrong theology. Because when the Israelite nation crossed the Jordan River into the Promised Land, they had to fight the enemy out of the territory and claim it and take it. So crossing the Jordan with all those nice Beulah Land songs and things we sang as kids, that's talking about stepping into the kingdom of God. And when you step into the kingdom of God, you have a promised territory, and your job is to fight the enemy out of that territory, and bring the kingdom of God into that territory.
Amen.
So I look at it as politically, governmentally, socially, this is our territory, and we can't much like we segregate downtown or segregate the schools. I can't segregate government, or segregate social, or segregate any other section of, this is our territory. I wanna stand before God one day and say, you gave us Martin County, we kick butt.
God's okay with that. And that is a Facebook post. That is a Facebook post. And it's so cool, because like, it's not just words. It's not. You gotta hear, like, I wish sometimes you guys, the whole church, could see what goes on on his whiteboard, and how we're strategizing, what the Lord's downloading. And it's not just him, it's all of us. We all have ideas, and what we're moving into, what Self-Evident does, what other ministries are doing that we support here. We're just moving, and we're seeing God move. I just, I love your testimony, Jen, of how He equipped you even though you felt unequipped. And it's like, we feel like that all the time. It's like, Lord, we don't know what to do, except go fight. That's all we know how to do, is go get those kids, go get those parents, right? And the teachers. So to follow up with the last question I asked him about, the gospel being not just in word only, can you give us maybe some ideas? Like, how can we, as people here in this church, get involved? How many of you guys have heard of like, the, you know, the drag queen story hours and all these other things? Did you know you as Christians could do that too? Not be drag queens, but like, you know what I'm saying? Really? You know what I'm saying? Okay? But it's like Kirk Cameron going into the schools and reading books and things like that. We can do something. We don't have to sit the sidelines and just watch the school board do it. We can actually do something. And Jen, I would love to hear what you have for us. How can we get involved as Revive Church, as congregants, as citizens, right? Of the county, of Martin County?
Well, we do need the community to get involved. So I mean, as I said earlier, what we're trying to do is make this the number one district in the state of Florida. We need all hands on deck, that does require our community to be involved. And I believe that there's so many ways that you can get involved, and the community has no idea. Like, oh, that's an option. You know, we wanna make sure that no child's left behind, that every child is reaching their full potential. And to do that, there are very simple ways that you can help. Do we have the slide ready?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Look at the kids.
All right.
Those chubby cheeks.
Go to the first one that shows what our options are. There we go. So ways to get involved, we've got classroom support. So we have teaching assistance, that might not be your thing. So tutoring, if you are gifted, where you can help a child with some extra help. Sometimes they just need a little extra help. And if you can tutor and give of your time in that way, that would be great. But here's a simple one, reading to the students in their classroom. You know, it takes thirty minutes to an hour of your time. A lot of these students are ELL learners, which means they have English as a second language. And they need to hear you read to them in English, so that they can start to familiarize themselves with our language. And the more they hear, the easier it's gonna become for them. Let's see. All right, ways, another way to get involved is cafeteria support. So assisting students with meals.
Yes, Lord.
And then, yeah, and you can help in our elementary and our middle. Way that you can do, you can be involved in being a monitor. There's several ways, but really, if you could give of your time to be a monitor during that, then it gives the teachers a break, and it's a simple thing. Also, there's office support. So if you are gifted with organizing, or filing, or you're just helping to kind of, you know, get things organized in the office, if that's you, then we could use your help there. Another way to get involved is the Literary and Media Center. They are shelving books all the time, they're having to go through and redo. You know, we have the students, they come in, they check out a book, and then they're turning new ones in. So those have to be reshelved, so if you can give of your time in that way, that would be great. Also, a literacy tutor, and assisting the students with the extra reading help. That is something that I have done myself. Something that I ran on was just our numbers and our proficiencies for the county in reading. And I feel like if I'm going to say that, then I should be involved, I should be in the middle of it. So I donated my time last year. Amy's also done it. And we go in, you know, to the different schools, and we are sitting with the students. We're trying to, you know, really, it's kind of almost a tutoring session, because you're sitting there with them, you're reading, and you're going over the different, you know, phonetic sounds for them. But if that's something that you can do, we, there's a great need for that. As well as translators. So if you speak, there's eighty-four or so different dialects that are spoken within our school district. So you can imagine what a challenge that can be at times, and for our teachers and our students, because that can be frustrating for them. So if you feel that you, you know, if you're speaking another language, we will take you. Please, come apply. Career technical education. Many people don't realize that we actually have a ton of options for our CTE program. It's something that we are really getting behind and pushing. We realize that not every student is going to go to a four-year college. And that's okay, there's no problem with that. And I think for so long, we pushed and pushed, and you were a second-class citizen if you didn't go get a four-year degree, and that's not the case. A trade is honorable, and you make really great money doing it. So that's something that we are getting behind and, you know, really pushing in the district. And there's a ton of ways you can help within just that one segment. It's, you can volunteer in the classrooms to help with that. If you own a business, you can sponsor a class, or sponsor a CTE program. You can, you can offer student internships, which is great if you have time and your business allows for interns. You can also come in and sponsor events for our staff. And also, to go back to the CTE program, that is something, if you are excellent at your trade, we would love for you to come in and speak to our students at any time. Because that's helpful, or if you can, you know, help to be hands-on with that. Let's see, what's this last one? Staff retention efforts, and sponsoring events, and... And with that, we have so many events that are going on throughout the district, and things, special things that we do for the staff, special days, or our professional development days. So you can come and give of your time at any of those, where you wanna serve our teachers. Because I feel, as a church, we've been called to serve. And that doesn't just mean within the church body. I believe that means that we are to go out, and we are to serve. And I feel like leading by example is a huge testimony for the church. You go and you do. You know, there's, that right there shines a light, no matter where you are, whether you're in the workplace, or whether you're in the schools, you're shining a light, because you're shining His light, and people see that, people notice a difference. So if you, I guess, have any questions?
Amen, no, yeah. And if we can start passing them, if you guys have any questions, get them ready right now, because we got, obviously, we'll get to you here in a minute. One of the things I wanted to point out too was, when I was going through like the CTE stuff, I started looking into the CTE stuff, and how you can intern kids at your business. And do you realize the opportunity there to witness to a child, or to maybe be a father figure or a mother figure they didn't have at home, and they don't, they don't... I mean, how many of these kids actually do you see getting spoken life into, and actually built up, right? And who they're called to be? And there's so many out, so many ways to preach the gospel, so many different ways to preach the gospel. And you guys can see our youth group coming out right now, because we're gonna bless them as a church when they go to school, or do homeschooling here. But I'm just so grateful that we have an opportunity as a church to get involved and do some of these things. And Pastor Todd, I was wondering, in your eyes, with our county, with the school systems, and getting involved in these elections, do you, do you foresee, obviously with StrikeForce coming out, do you foresee where Revive can be kind of that? And I'm wording this in a certain way. Do you see us becoming the example out there, so that others can do the same thing?
Yeah, I think one of the things that we, one thing that kind of fell into our lap, if you will, is the superintendent we have. What an amazing guy, what an amazing fit.
He really is.
And then, we worked to help, basically, staff our school board with people we knew that were gonna drive direction for the Lord, kind of thing. And so I think what we're talking about tonight, so that everyone else can figure out, man, there's a bunch of them, isn't there?
Yeah, amen.
I think what we're talking about tonight is, maybe it's time for either churches or the Christian market as a whole in this territory to go school by school. And let's say, let's have the majority of the volunteers who work in the school be people who represent the values of God.
Amen.
And we can begin going school by school by school. Our Revive can take a school and say, we wanna be the volunteer basis for that school.
Amen.
And so, again, we're stepping into more and more of our territory. Again, we're not controlling radical, right-wing religious zealots. What we are is people who care enough about the kids to wanna introduce them to God, to introduce them to the values that God has for us, and to be salt and light.
Amen.
And I think this is a great opportunity for a broader base of people to get involved.
Amen. Questions? Questions, I think someone was back here. Does anyone else have questions? Just keep your hands up. Can't crease the shoes. Let's get real. This is the God of heaven we're talking about. This is the God of heaven.
How does that work?
That's a great question. You will have to go to the school, yes, or not the school itself, but if you go to the district office, and you can fill out paperwork, but you are gonna have to go through a background check. And as long as everything comes back great, you will be on your way to volunteering.
And there's also a Facebook page you can go to to start, right?
Yes, and there is a Facebook page that you can go to. It's the MCSD Volunteer Services. And you can kind of, they'll post things and needs that they have, and you can go on there and see where maybe you can go in, and, you know, volunteer and plug a hole that we have.
Just keep that picture up. Anyone else with questions tonight? Really? Hey, there you go. Oh, well, yeah, we'll be right there.
Do they, do they have opportunities for Big Brother, Big Sisters, or anybody who wants to be part of that, to come into the schools, to help coach after-school programs, or throughout, you know, special field day? You know, just to kind of help mentor kids, just through sports, and not through maybe reading in the classroom, or volunteering in the cafeteria? Just something like that.
Well, you actually can volunteer with our sports. You can, you can definitely do that. But they have, there is an organization, that's the Big Brothers and Big Sisters, and you can basically sign up through them, and they can direct you. But there is one locally. We don't, no.
But that's something we may be able to develop. Hey?
I was just wondering, when you volunteer, are you able to come with your own children? Like, the reading of the books and stuff like that? I homeschool, so I was just wondering if I volunteered, would I be able to bring my kids, so they could see?
Yes, you wouldn't be able to. We are very strict with who comes in and out of our schools. You do have to, we have to have a background check on you, and it's a little bit different. But we do it to protect our children.
Anyone else? All right.
I just have a comment for, about the sports. I do know that some of the schools always are needing help with physical education.
Yes.
And like she said, it's just a level-two background check. You can get in there pretty quickly.
Amen. Well, guys, if there's no more questions tonight, I just wanna revive, we can thank Jen and Pastor Todd tonight for being here, but also... But also too, if you guys would join me in prayer over our school board, over, over our town council, over our schools, and then Pastor Todd's gonna wanna do something a little different. But I just think how awesome it is, we have three representatives, not just of church, of Jesus. Like, they're being the light in the community, and I just wanna bless them. So, Father, we just, we just bless our school board members in the name of Jesus. And Lord, you've commissioned them to walk... And Lord, You've commissioned them to walk this walk, Father, something that few people do, and think, "Man, maybe that's the secular world." No, I'm supposed to, like she said, be the salt and light. I'm supposed to be the light of Christ. And we just thank Jen, and we thank Amy, we thank Mike, and just their boldness and their courage, even in the little things, Father, to step forward, and we just bless their pathways, Father, as they trust You more and more. And I thank You, Father, for divine witness, as they speak, as they make decisions, Father, that You lead and guide them to all things to the truth, and that, Lord, they bear the responsibility of our kids, our county. And Father, that's a great weight, and I pray they cast their cares on You, Lord, in Jesus' name. And that, Father, You would answer them mightily, Lord. You would show them things they didn't even see before. Father, ways we can help our county change, Father. The ways that we can see these young people who don't have families, Lord, that we can create that for them, Lord, to what is a father and what is a mother in Jesus Christ, Lord. And we just thank Jen tonight for just being here, for wanting to be a part of this, not just this church, Lord, but to see this county change for the name of the Lord, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. Amen. Thank you so much, Jen, tonight. Pastor Todd, if you would.
Hey, let me have that whole crew up here. Up over here, come on. No, you're gonna play a role in this too. Let me get them situated, and you're gonna come in behind them. Just spread out, fill in. Oh, you can face me. I'm gonna be talking to you. I can talk to your back if you want me to, but. Come on. Come on around. Come on. Wow, I wanna say some things to you guys as a group. You are developing and are releasing a reputation. You have a reputation. You have a reputation as a group. You have a reputation from Revive, but you have a reputation in your school. What do I mean by that? I mean, the testimonies I heard from camp, the stories that I'm hearing about each one of you, and what's going on in your life, and the stands that you're taking, and the beliefs that you have, and the encounters that you've had with God, are sending a reputation out that something is going on in the midst of you, that you are an uncommon group, that you are not the normal group of students from a school. You are a group that is bonded together by something greater than that, and you're taking your strength out of something, listen close. You're taking your strength out of something that's greater than your peers. What do I mean by that? I mean, you have an independence before God, that you don't need the compliment, the friendship, the acknowledgement of the friends around you. You need that from God, and therefore God gives you friendships. Does that make sense? What I'm saying is, when you put your foundation and your basis in God, you become stronger, and this is what happens. Instead of you looking for someone to follow, the other students are looking to follow you. Why? Because you have a strength. I will give you this as the most important thing I will ever say to you in your life, or in my life of your life, okay? Here's the most important thing. So write this down later, go look at it, whatever. But the number-one most important thing for your entire life is make God your accountability. You're not trying to impress your friends, you're not trying to impress the people around you, your brothers, your sisters. You're trying to stand righteous before God. Why? Because when you stand righteous before God, He exalts you. He lifts you up. He draws people to you, because He will want to pour into you His strength, His grace, His mercy, His integrity. And other people will see that in you, and want to know more about you and more about your God, because you don't need them, you need God. Does that make sense? I'm not saying don't have friends. Friends are important. Friends are critical. Friends are a great help. But when it comes to the decisions you make about your life, where you will go, what you will look at, what you will get involved in, what you won't, make sure that your accountability for what you're doing is before God. In other words, God, are you okay that I'm getting into vaping? God, are you okay that I'm looking at porn? God, are you okay that I'm gonna stand up and do a Bible study? God, are you okay that I'm willing to witness to my friend? Make your accountability, God. Why? Because He will give you strength like you've never had. He'll give you integrity like you've never had. He will have people follow you, because you are strong, and they wanna know where you get that strength from. So I'm gonna ask this entire congregation that's here tonight to come up behind this group. We're gonna surround them, and we're just gonna speak some blessings over you guys, because I am super impressed with you. I am super impressed with some of the stances you've taken. I'm super impressed with the unity that I see between you, among you. And so I'm gonna just ask you guys to gather around, and you can start kind of quietly praying your own prayer. Come on, come on. What are y'all waiting for? Come on. Fill in, this is important. All the way, I'm not gonna let you hang out there. You gotta come all the way in. All right. For the youth that are standing up front, this is what I want you to know. You got a whole group of people behind you. They believe in you, they wanna support you, they will be there for you. So Father God, in the name of Jesus, tonight, we declare that this group right here, this group right here, these individual youth, this group of school, this whatever school they're at, wherever they're at, that they will be the leaders in the place that you put them. That people will come to them to find out, how do you have so much integrity? How do you have so much leadership skill? How do you express yourself in such a way that makes so much sense? God, I pray that You would bless them with wisdom beyond their years, that they would begin to see who they're going to be, and stop worrying about who they are. That they would not worry about what's going on around them now, but to begin to think about where they're headed and what's for them in the future. I thank You, God, that You will surround them with good friends, solid friends, friends that know You, God, friends that would lift them up in prayer, friends that would lay hands on them and pray over them, friends that would be there for them when the going gets tough. Surrounding them always with a group that helps them understand that there is a family of God that they can depend on. And God, I pray that You give them knowledge, knowledge in their studies. Knowledge that when they read books, when they study for exams, that that information lands in their mind and stays there, and is ready for recall. God, that they would not struggle with grades, because they depend on their God to give them knowledge and wisdom to take those tests. That You would give them a desire to be leaders where they are. That You would give them favor, God, favor poured on them, that they would be selected for positions, that teachers would want to pull them forward, that friends would say, "No, we need you to be our leader." You would give them favor in everything they do. God, whatever's going on in their home, I pray peace over their home. Peace with their parents, peace and understanding, that grace would abound in their homes, and that their homes would be a place where they can energize and recharge and come back into the school setting. God, I pray that in their quiet times, when they study You, that You would open yourself up to them, that they would understand who You are, who You have designed them to be. That an anticipation would grow in their hearts for what You're going to do with them, the way You're gonna make their path straight, the way You're gonna light it. God, that they would begin to see that You're moving in their life, that You're arranging things, that You're setting things up, that You're preparing things for them in advance, and that they can move freely and easily in the things that You have set up for them to do. And God, I ask You to bless them with encounters with You. That in the moments of prayer, they would feel and sense and know Your presence. That in the times when they worship, they would feel strengthened and encouraged. That in the times they pray, You would give them the words to speak, to declare, to change atmospheres. That they would be people who step in and say, "What is broken, I will fix it. What is not right, I will lead it." Father God, I pray that You would come up under them and gird them up, strengthen them, strengthen them in their emotions, strengthen them in their integrity, in their thought process, strengthen them in their bodies, that every weapon formed against them would be broken and dropped to the floor. That every assignment by the enemy against their life would be canceled right now, in the name of Jesus. No enemy assignment against you. Every spirit that would come against them to attack them would be broken and cast off now, in the name of Jesus. But God, that they would walk in Your ways, walk in Your ways, and watch You bless them. Father God, bless them this school year. Bless them with leadership. Bless them with the desire to lead. Bless them with favor. And may we hear testimony after testimony after testimony of what You did with them this year, in the favor and the blessing that You poured on them, in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys. God bless you all. We'll see you Sunday.